All right, good morning, folks, and welcome to the V O C C meeting. Today is July the ninth of two thousand and twenty five, and time is nine A M. And with that, we're going to turn this over to Sean for our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. And the earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God hovered over the face of the waters. Genesis verses one and two. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for yet another opportunity to bask in the richness and the glory of your creation. We come together once again, Lord, asking that you watch over our first responders, those who sacrifice everything for everyone. We also ask once again, Lord, that you watch over our board. You give them the knowledge and the wisdom they need to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the people they serve. We thank you for our blessings on this county. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty of justice for all.
All right, thank you, Sean. So call this meeting to order, and I ask you, Corey, to do a roll call.
Commissioner Schroder?
Here.
Commissioner Buck?
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda here is going to be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the elected officials, department heads, and staff reports. Do we have any elected officials here?
We probably should approve the agenda as well.
Okay, we'll back it up. So a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Schroder, I'm getting ahead of myself. Next item is the elected officials, department heads, and staff report. Do we have any elected officials? Like to make any comments? All right, any department heads, or any staff reports? We're getting off easy today, huh?
Well, I'd like to take a quick moment just to remind staff that's here and our honorable commissioners, we're entering budget season, so we will all need to start looking at our budgets, reviewing last year's, the prior year, and plan for this upcoming year. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any others? All right. Next item is public comments. If we have any public comments, we'd ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. Do they have any public comments? If you give us your name and address, sir?
Thank you. It's John Hogan, two three three four five, Jade Circle, Deer Trail. And I actually email you my thoughts about Sheriff Norton. I also wish to present my opinion in person. As a former volunteer at North Central Fire, I've had many interactions with Sheriff Norton and the members of his staff, fires, motor vehicle accidents, medical emergencies, and he and his deputies are always professional and truly care about the citizens they serve. It's always been amazing on the calls I've been on in the past where they had to respond. Elbert County's growing. With that growth, inevitably comes an increase in crime, drugs, and emergency situations. I believe that over the last eight years, Sheriff Norton has proven that he has the experience, the drive, and the dedication to lead a sheriff's department that can handle those challenges. To not allow him to be eligible for a third term, I believe, would be a grave disservice to the citizens of Elbert County. I would certainly like to see him placed on a ballot for a third term, and if not, the citizens of Elbert County would not be able to have their voices heard. And that's it. Thank you.
Sir, any other public comments? We can, if there are any others for Norton, we can wait until he comes up on the agenda. That would probably be the best thing to do, if we're going to follow proper, yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Gibbels, one nine six five six, Weidemeyer Road, Elbert County Environmental Alliance. I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the over four hundred members of E C E A to express our profound thanks to you. You, the Board of County Commissioners, throughout this long process with X L, have taken the time to listen, to investigate, and to do what is best for our county. We know that doing the right thing isn't always easy, and it often takes courage to make hard decisions. We are so grateful to the three of you for representing the citizens of Elbert County and being willing to stand up to X L's bullying tactics. We know that there are more challenges ahead, and we have every confidence that you will continue to do the right thing. We appreciate you more than I can say, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I don't have the list, so whoever stands up. If it's regarding Sheriff Norton, then we'll wait on that until we get into that portion of the.
So I'll get a second bite of the apple on that, because I have two, three other issues I wanted to talk about.
Kick it off, buddy.
And then later, thank you. I was going to say I have one, one comment and three questions. Three quick questions that I think deserve, that are probably of great interest to the citizens and.
Before you get started, just if you would, state your name for the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Rowland, eighteen ninety one Pawnee Parkway, Elizabeth, Colorado, eight oh one oh seven. The first issue is, just go back real quickly on my five minutes here, is that the U S G S, I want to talk about that. It's been an ongoing discussion. Back in two thousand and twenty-three, September of twenty-three, I had a couple conversations with the then commissioners, who are no longer, no longer on the board, about the promise from the U S G S to give us a summary report for the U S G S monitoring program that we started in two thousand and fifteen, and has been done and tested every other month, pretty much every other month, since that time for over ten years, giving the water levels and the static, static levels of about forty or thirty-six wells now, I think four have dropped off. We all agreed back in two thousand and fifteen that that was incredibly important and that we wouldn't really have any meaningful data for, I think at the time, we said five years. It's now been ten or more. And that information is, I think, critical to the conversation and to the planning that we do in this county as it relates to our water. I have also been speaking with the U S G S. My test well, my well is a test well, and I get an opportunity to hogtie them every, every other month and ask the questions, none of which have been directly answered. I know they had a meeting here with y'all, and during that meeting, it was talked about that we would have a summary report that it was being worked on. It was in two thousand and twenty-three, I had the same response from the board, and during two thousand and twenty-four, on several occasions, it was forthcoming, it was going to be there by the end of the year, et cetera, et cetera. Well, here we are in July of two thousand and twenty-five, and we haven't seen that data. And yet, we've just, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, given them a check for three hundred thousand dollars for another five-year extension of that agreement, which I think is critically important to, to continue. But I guess the question is this, for, for the answer to transparency, where is the report? And I know it's not in your hands, it's in the U S G S, and they're probably even more bureaucratic than we are in our local government, but I think it's time to get the product that we paid for and the product that we so desperately need. And it's, I'm not trying to predict the outcomes or the answers, but we know that we have concerns about water levels as it relates to the increase in uses and, 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 and the development. I'm not anti-development, I'm just anti-use all the water and don't do anything about it. So I would ask that you, that would be my number one question, I know you don't need to answer the questions today, obviously. The second thing is, can you give us an update, or will you give us updates soon about where you stand, where the process of considering the moratorium is at? I don't think, and maybe I've missed it, but I haven't heard anything about where you all at on researching that or doing that, and we'd like to probably have an answer to that. And then, and, and the last question I have is, and I don't mean to be overly sensitive about this issue or disrespectful, but the previous county attorney is no longer with the county, and in the year before that, the previous board gave them an extension of their contract, which had a couple different provisions, and one of those provisions was that they would get a severance pay of six months, which amounts to about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in taxpayer dollars, if it was for cause or not for cause, and that was the provision. I don't, I'm not suggesting that I know which one of the two reasons were used, but I think the public as a, as a taxpayer and as a group of taxpayers want to know if, if we are paying that, or if we didn't have to pay that, or if we, if we didn't exercise, if we didn't allow that hundred and ten to be paid because of cause, for cause or not cause, just as a matter of expenditures. That's all I have, and I'll be back for Doc, for Sheriff Norton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comments. Next item we have on the agenda is discussion items, and I don't have any on there, so we will move to action items. Action items is a motion to approve or consideration for May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I recommend, recommendation that we, or make a motion that we approve the May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes.
Is there a second?
Second, with the friendly amendment to dispense of those reading, those minute, reading those minutes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of June the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five minutes?
Mr. Chairman, will we approve the June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five minutes as presented and dispense with the reading of those minutes?
Second.
Is any further discussion? Right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration of June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the third term for the coroner and for the sheriff's office, or the sheriff. Is there a motion to approve? We can do that, thank you. All right, so we'll open up the public comment for the consideration of the third term for coroner and sheriff. Miss Ware? Aye.
Aye. Christine Ware, twenty-six eighty-one, Gold Creek Drive, Elizabeth, Colorado, Elbert County. My husband, Bob, is not able to be here today, but, so I'm speaking for both of us. We have lived in Elbert County for twenty-one years. I have known Sheriff Frangis, I have known Shane Heap, I have known Deputy Troy McCoy. I was instrumental in helping Tim get on the ballot the first time, and yes, he was an outsider at the time. He is no longer an outsider, and he has proved himself both as a friend, not only to me and my husband, but to this county. I had the opportunity the other day to run into Grant and Chris and had a discussion and told them my opinion that, on why they made the decision they did. They disagree with my opinion, and that's their right, and that's the same with you, Dallas, because you were part of that decision not to put them on. The way I see it, number one, you're only putting him on the ballot to see for a third term. You're not, we're not electing him as pres, as, as sheriff. That means that everybody has an opportunity to put somebody else in their place that they think might be better than Sheriff Norton. So the decision to put the three other ladies on the ballot, on the last ballot, to me was a slap in the face to Sheriff Norton, and to me as personally, because I know him and I trust him. I also know his wife, who has been instrumental in getting money for the Sheriff's Foundation. Without her, you're going to lose her as well as you, as Sheriff Norton, Sheriff Norton, sorry, Tim. And she is instrumental in what has happened in this county. Yes, Tim was new when he started, but he definitely has proved himself, and there were, I'm not going to, how do I say this? There have been issues between the commissioners and the county manager, and I think, unfortunately, we need better communication all the way around, and we need to be open. It should not be political. Tim is not a politician, and we don't need politicians in this particular position. He is the people's sheriff, and I think that he deserves to be put on the ballot to find out if the people, not the commissioners, say that he is entitled to a third term. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sir?
The same Robert Rowland was here a minute ago, so I won't sign up again. I will mirror a lot of what the previous speaker said, and I'd just like to point out that I think that the main issue here is an issue of fairness and equal treatment. And I think that, without going into any opinions or detail about the reasons or the methods for which his name was removed, while three others were allowed to continue, also in the same electoral, elected positions, I think it's incumbent upon us to try to right that wrong, and I agree wholeheartedly that it is really a decision for the people of this community, that we have a right and an expectation to participate in decisions. We certainly hire the three of you to make those decisions and understand that we won't oftentimes agree with you, and sometimes we should have an opportunity to at least have our opinions and our desires and our mandates, if you will, considered. So I am strongly urging that they put this, right this wrong, if you will. I think it was done in error, and let's fix that mistake and move on. But I agree, you know, I've spent a couple years as a sheriff's officer myself when I got out of the military, along the lakeshore in Michigan, not in, in Colorado, but it's a tough job. Continuity is so important. We are at a time in our, in our state, in our country, and in our county, when the growth, the changes which are coming, are here now, have resulted in additional stresses, strain on resources, and I don't think there's any question, if the sheriff's department doesn't broadcast a lot of this, they do a good job of keeping it under control, but we have drug trafficking, we have sex trafficking, we have stolen cars coming through Elizabeth, getting picked up by the cameras, all of which they do the, an excellent job of protecting us for. But we need people with experience in Elbert County to face some of the challenges we currently have, and I just want to say, you know, Tim and I didn't necessarily get off on the right foot when, during his first election, and, and that's how politics work sometimes, but we need him, we need his people. I had two deputies at my house this weekend, at two o'clock in the morning, with the neighbor, somebody was banging on neighbors' doors and quoting mine, and they're professional, they're well-trained, they're well-chosen, and I let him run that sheriff's department, and let's get him back to where he's being treated fairly like the other elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sorry, I got this lady, and then I'll call you.
Amanda Smith, five nine five, Pen Road, Elizabeth, Colorado, Elbert County. I am currently reading it, everything on behalf of my boyfriend Brett Titus. He has a meeting. He has written, "I'm a military veteran, a retired Denver police officer, and with over thirty years of service. I've also lived in Elbert County for thirty-one years, and now the C E O and founder of LifeSpot Technologies, which is protecting Elbert County schoolchildren. I have known Sheriff Norton for over twenty years. He's a patriot, a leader, dedicated to protecting and serving our county and our country. His service for over the last several years has been exceptional and has made us all safer and brought community together. This is evident in very many ways. Just, for example, the sold-out back the badge nearly every year is just one. Not providing him the opportunity to be reelected again would be a huge mistake for this county. We need him and the amazing sheriff's department that he has created to continue to serve and protect us." Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Belinda Saville, three six seven zero six, Pawnee Court, Elizabeth. Commissioners, I stand before you today, not just because Sheriff Norton is well-loved and respected, a respected public servant, but because he's so much more. He has fulfilled all his promises to this community and more. When he was short-staffed, he went out and patrolled cars. He has tirelessly reached out if someone had a concern and contacted him. He has been more than law, than, he has been more than law enforcement in this community. He has served behind the scenes over and over and honored those that are part of his team at the sheriff's office. Your vote is not a vote to keep him in office. It is a vote to allow the people to vote their desires. It's freedom. It's what many in this county have been fighting for to protect. I trust that you'll listen to the voice of the people.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Devaldez Pepper, two five one three four, County Road five. In the last election, people took their trust, their treasured trust, and listened to our elected officials, and they listened to them say that because we're a small community, because people take, it takes some time for them to get up and running to do their positions well, because we can't pay as much as bigger communities, we want to retain our elected officials for a third term. Most of us believed them. We thought they were being honest. So my understanding is that, of course, if that is true, if that's what they truly wanted, then they will always support the sheriff and the coroner being given the opportunity to run for a third term. Now, if they were misleading us intentionally or falsifying their beliefs, then we will see that they will not support having the sheriff and the coroner be given a third term. I truly believe that we are a small community. We can't necessarily pay as much as somebody working, you know, thirty minutes outside of the county. So it's vitally important that we maintain the continuity in all of these elected positions and give everyone a third term. Sheriff Norton has done an exceptionally good job building a team, earning the trust of the community, and I'd like to see that continue. I love everything that's going on in the sheriff's department. I think they're hedging the, some of the metro issues that are coming into our community, they're hedging them well, but if people were honest and they didn't intentionally deceive us, then I know that they are going to support this third term for the sheriff and the coroner. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I know I spoke at the wrong time earlier, but I'm kind of new to this.
Good, that's fine.
And I would say in, in closing, that if you want to serve the citizens of Elbert County, that the right thing to do is to let the citizens of Elbert County decide if they want to reelect Sheriff Norton for another term, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing that there are no other comments, I want to entertain a motion at this time by the board.
I'd like to make some comments first, if I could.
Let's do a motion, then we'll have further discussion, if we will. It would be the Robert rule, so if you'll make a motion, then we'll, we'll call for further discussion at that point, because I'm sure Commissioner Schroder's got some comments to make, and I have to.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to allow the sheriff and the coroner to run for a third term in alignment with the other elected officials, and would like to instruct our attorney to draft the resolution and the ballot language so that we may have this on the ballot in November.
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second, and further discussion? So, Commissioner Buck?
Yeah, I also would like to let the voters decide, and I would like to kind of follow up with what one of our citizens, Christine Ware, mentioned, that Tim Norton is not a politician. He ran on less politics and more service, and I believe he has lived up to that promise. We had a lot of emails, a lot of calls for support. Two of the ones were letters from peers, one of them being a Rabo County Sheriff, Tyler Brown, one of them being the Douglas County Sheriff, Darren Weekly. That says a lot to me when your peers of your neighboring counties that you work with on a day-to-day basis stand up for you and show that support. The community outreach that he does is amazing. I've gotten to know him over the last number of years. I consider him a good friend, and I would like to let the voters decide.
Commissioner Schroder?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This obviously is a hot topic, and it should not be a decision that's made about the person, it should be made about the, the position. And I won't go into the whole history from last year, but I will say, I said the same thing that I'm going to say now. I can argue both sides equally well as to which side is, is, is right, and I don't disagree that if the citizens overwhelmingly want to have this on the, the ballot, then we put it on the ballot. But I do believe in following our policies, and we've got some, in my mind, some discrepancies with what our policy is as far as putting initiatives on the ballot. We're a little bit behind on the timeline that's put out there, which, that, that can be overcome, I'm not so much worried about that, but it, it certainly still has some more items that need to be talked about. Firm estimates on what the cost will be in discussions with the clerk and recorder, what the actual ballot language will be, what the objective will be, and so we, I, in my opinion, we're not to the point that we're ready to, to not have the, we don't have the details enough to, to move forward at this time. And the, in number six, verse number C says, "Ballot initiative requests should demonstrate public support," and there's obviously a lot of passionate people in support, it's for Sheriff Norton. Commissioner Buck said he's received lots of emails, I have less than twenty, plus the, one, two, three, four, half dozen or so that spoke in favor. So that's, in, in comparison to the, the county population of twenty-seven thousand, we still have a relatively small number. Now, we have a passionate group of people here. There's no reason that this group can't form a group and go out and, and get the petitions for hundreds of people to support this, for us to get the response like we did last year in, in response to those, and, and I've, I've spoke with Sheriff Norton and his command staff about this policy before. If there's petitions, if there's the overwhelming number presented here, what choice do we have but to put it on if there's hundreds of people supporting it? But we're not to that point yet. Obviously, there's, there's passionate people here that are willing to go do the work, so, so go do that. That would be my, my ask, and we, we have gone to where we, we don't follow policy. And we have gone to where we don't follow policy much anymore around here, and it distresses me. If we're not going to follow policy, then we need to admit it, and we need to amend them, we need to alter it, or rescind them. But that is, that's my position. We have plenty of time. According to the policy, the action item, when we have a full resolution with the actual verbiage, not some hypothetical, can be presented to us for an up or down vote. And if there's overwhelming support shown at that time, then it should go on the ballot. And that's my comment, but at this point, I do not think it's ready for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroder. Got a few comments with regards to this topic myself. For those of you who don't know, I'm a retired police chief, many years in law enforcement, and I will tell you that from being an insider in law enforcement and looking at the sheriff's office and how they operate day-to-day, that is exemplary, I think they do an outstanding job under the leadership of Sheriff Norton. I understand what Commissioner Schroder's saying, but I will say that I've gotten, and this is a guesstimate, but I've gotten at least 100 emails and phone calls combined, and I'll be glad to print those out or supply those for the record. And out of all of those, there was only one that I got that was a no. Everybody else is overwhelmingly in support. Also would like to address that the relationship between the sheriff and this county, this board of commissioners, has improved tremendously compared to the last board. We're on a much better working relationship now than we were, or they were in the past, and I'll have to commend the sheriff, he has done an excellent job with limited resources due to budget constraints. These guys are out there covering a large county, a lot of, a lot of calls that they're having, and with the increase in population, the calls go up, that's just common sense. So that's my comments that I wanted to make. Commissioner Buck, you asked for?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple additional comments to follow up. Sheriff Norton was part of the petition and the drive a year ago to run for a third term. He was part of that, and he was removed. The will of the citizens was overrode. He was removed along with the corridor, the coroner, and we didn't need one single email today, in my, in my opinion. We didn't need one single phone call, we didn't need any testimony. He had all that. That was already done, that was completed part of the project. This was to show additional support, in my view. I think it was great to hear you guys. I was starting to get a little choked up about it, listening to you guys. It meant a lot to me that you guys showed up today and showed that support. So as far as I'm concerned, we're making a motion today to move the process forward. We are following policy as I know it to instruct our attorney to draft a resolution, and then we can vote on that draft resolution and the budget language and move it forward. Now, if that's not following policy, I don't know what is, and I'll be happy to, happy to learn what it is, but I wanted to move this thing along before we did run out of time. Commissioner Schroder mentioned that this is on a timeframe, you know, related issue in regards to November, so I'm pushing to move it forward, and I hope I can get support to do that.
Mr. Schroder?
Yeah, just to clarify for the motion then, the motion is just for the attorney to compose language for the ballot, or is it to put it on the ballot?
My understanding, Commissioner, if I understood the motion correctly, is I've been directed to prepare a resolution that would create the ballot question and then send this to the ballot. That resolution would be brought back at a future business meeting.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion with the board? Sir?
No, I would just say, continue to reach out. You know, the more public support that we show when it comes time to approve this resolution, you tie our hands, right? So that's, that would be my comment.
Commissioner Buck, any other comment?
I did have a citizen comment, I'm sorry. I did have citizen comment along the way in this process where citizens were asking me, "Why do we have to write an email? Why do we have to call you again? We already did this, we already went through this process, and we were overrode." They didn't feel it was necessary. I kind of took that perspective as well, and so I kind of disagree. We'll have to agree to disagree on that, but I'm looking forward to moving this forward. Thank you.
Question for our counsel there, should we restate the motion at this time, just so we are all clear before we take a vote? And do we need to do a roll call?
I'll leave that up to the board. If I have restated it clearly enough, I certainly understand the motion, but if you'd like to rephrase, that's acceptable as well. A roll call vote is also within the discretion of the board.
I'd just like, for the record, a clarification of what we're voting on.
Okay. So, Commissioner Buck, would you restate your motion, please?
I can rephrase it if you think it's necessary. You didn't appear that you felt it was necessary. I don't think I need to restate the motion if we're on the same, on the same page.
Ultimately, it's not my decision, it's the board's, and so...
Can you restate the motion, please, Forrest, as you know it to be?
As I understand the motion, it's a motion to direct me as county attorney to prepare a resolution that would potentially extend the term limits of the sheriff and the coroner to a third term. That would also create a ballot question that would be sent to the citizens. That resolution would be brought back at a future business meeting for board consideration.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Schroder, any other discussions?
I made it clear, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions, sir? All right, we've got a motion, and there is a second, there's no further discussion. All in favor? Sign of aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item on here is we're going to convene as a county board of equalization at this time.
We need to do our public hearing for the Elizabeth Celtic Festival.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't have a number five. Didn't see it, sorry. Public hearing for special event liquor permit for Elizabeth Celtic Festival. Is anybody here for that?
Mr. Chair, move we open public hearing for the special liquor, event liquor permit for Elizabeth Celtic Festival.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone here for that?
Yes, that would be me, Honorable Commissioner. Basically, this is the special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Celtic Festival. This festival has requested a special event liquor permit for their event on July 19th from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and July 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., located at Casey Jones Park in Elizabeth. This is an annual event with no changes from the previous year. All the required forms and fees have been submitted. Public notice has been placed on the property and in the Ranchland News. There's been no other changes at this time as last year's event. We did reach out and ask the sheriff's office if they had any concerns with this event, and received a no to that, no concerns on this event. So right now, we basically are recommending approval of the special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Celtic Festival. That is the action that staff recommends for the board.
Okay. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, move we approve the special event liquor permit for Elizabeth Celtic Festival.
Your second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, move we close the public hearing for special event liquor permit for Elizabeth Celtic Festival.
Thank you, is a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, now we will move to convene as the county board of equalization at this time.
Mr. Chair, move that we open as the county board of equalization.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have, the assessor is out, we're supposed to give a report today, and she is out due to a family emergency, so we're asking for a continuance on this to July the 15th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Schroder, do you have any comments on this, sir?
No, I think it's the appropriate thing to do, given the family emergency. Therefore, I move that we continue this meeting with the county board of equalization to July 15th at 9:00 a.m. in this location.
All right, Commissioner Buck?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, carries. This time, we will reconvene back as a regular B O C C meeting. So we had the board planning. First item is the agenda items for the next meeting. Want to put on there the resolution, discussion of the resolution for the sheriff. That be correct? Lance, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
That'll give us time to get everything done?
Yep, I have enough time to do it.
Any other agenda items that we know of at this time? Commissioner Schroder?
Nope.
All right. I don't have any pending hearings or workshops or study sessions at this time, it's always subject to change. With that, we will recess this meeting until 1:00 p.m. for land use hearings. Thank you. Thank you.